Monday, March twenty-six, twenty eighteen. Regular session of the Anamosa City Council, the city all council chambers. One point oh roll call.
Britt.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, March twelfth, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
So mo.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Cody. Any changes? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carry. Four point oh public hearing is none. Five point oh presentations. Five point one Chris Collins regarding pit bull prohibition.
Chris Collins, five oh seven East First Street. Um, I want to start by saying that, and I already apologize to Crump, uh, Mr. Crump. Um, if any of you guys seen any comments on the Facebook page I run, I apologize. I try to delete those because as you guys well know, there's knuckleheads in every group that you have. Um, so I do, I sincerely apologize for any of that. And I've actually defended you guys, all of you guys. Um, and before I start, is it okay if I ask, uh, Mr. Sheridan a question? As I believe it's pertinent to the next vote that you have.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, um, in your opinion, you stated that you are not opposed to dropping breed specific legislation. However, you want to enact more breed specific legislation. What research did you do that went into determining that pit bulls are more aggressive than other dogs?
I didn't conduct any research to show that they're more aggressive than other dogs. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to find a middle ground between the two, uh, sides of, of the issue. And, um, I think it's well recognized, I mean, many communities do have bans or some sort of recognition, some sort of legislation regarding pit bulls specifically. And it's not so much, I think, geared towards their aggression, but their, just their, um, their ability to, to, uh, cause damage when they, when they do bite.
Okay, fair enough. Um, in your opinion, is making the city of Anamosa safer by charging, uh, thirty-three times the amount to register your dog than any other breed? Knowing that rottweilers are aggressive, can be, um, wiener dogs have killed people. Do you, do you feel that that is, um, making the city safer? Because I agree, I-
The license fee was based on just the added regulations. So there's added administration to it, um, compared to the regular dog licenses, that's all it comes down to.
Okay, so it would be for enac- enforcing this? Because it would cost about eight, eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars to have a breed specific legislation in, in Anamosa? Just roughly?
I can't say.
Okay. Um, so when I started this, it was just me and about three or four people. Um, and part of that is, um, not a lot of people know how to kind of navigate through. Uh, Tammy helped me out quite a bit, uh, Mr. Crump and, uh, Cody, when I very first started six or seven months ago. And then, as I kind of started talking to more people, more people found out that, you know, this isn't being enforced right now. Part of that is who owns the dogs? And, and, and I'm not talking about pit bull, I'm talking about dog laws in general, registering dogs, lease laws, pipe laws. And I think part of that problem's been addressed. And I do agree with you that we need to find a common ground. To me, and to everybody that's for this, I think the common ground would be to end breed specific legislation and start enforcing vicious dog, dog at large and registering. Make it across the board. Because you guys asked for expert, uh, Mr. Mockert, you wanted more information. So I talked to Brian Darrell, I had him come and speak. He's an, he's an expert. We've had animal trainers, groomers, everybody that works with this breed here, owners here saying, there's nothing that says these dogs are inherently more aggressive than any other dog. As I talked to a few of you before, I can go online and I can find information for two sides of every single argument out there. If I wanted to research gun control, I can find you information on why nobody should have guns, and I can find you information on why everybody should have guns. If we want to eliminate all crime, you're never going to do that. Okay? All you're doing by having this is hurting the people, the good, like, the people that just abide by the laws because of something that's not factually based. You guys wanted to know, why was this law put into place in the first place? Well, Mr. Darrell was here when it was, thirty years ago, and he said, that's just what we did. I don't accept that. It's, in two, in nineteen eighty-eight, that's fine. That, maybe that's how laws were created then, I don't, I wasn't even born in nineteen eighty-eight, so I don't know. But, we have research, we have science. These laws have been in effect, they're shown time and time again, they're not effective. Um, and I kind of want to touch on a sto- uh, a story that was told at the last meeting about two pit bulls and a beagle. They, I think they attacked a cow. Two pit bulls were put down right away, euthanized. The beagle that did the exact same thing was allowed to return back to the city of Anamosa. How is that fair? So you have three vicious dogs, one has no penalty, two get put down. You guys wanted to know about why people don't register their dogs. I get probably twenty, twenty emails a day regarding this. And most people didn't even know you had to register. On the website, you guys have like the, where you have to pick up after your dog, but it doesn't really say much about registering or how to go about that. It's hard to do because the police department's only open until four-thirty. So if you guys make it easier for us to do this, we'll do it. Okay, if you work Monday through Friday, nine to five, how are you ever supposed to register your dog in Anamosa? I didn't really know that there was a problem with dogs running at large in Anamosa, but it sounds like that's a kind of an issue. So let's, the police department, why don't we challenge ourselves to enforce those? And I'm not saying every time a dog gets out of the house, you need to, you need to write a citation, but if it's a reoccurring issue, we need to address that. If you guys want to address vicious dogs, then let's make a one bite policy. Because I talked to, um, the Jones County, somebody in the Jones County Sheriff's Department, when he started, I think it's six towns that they patrol, all six had pit bull bans. Since then, there's only one left. So I said, well, what, what have you noticed? And he said, well, what I notice is that without a one bite policy, which we have now and it works, if your dog bites and breaks the skin, it's done, it goes to the humane society. That works. What you have is, when you leave all, laws open for interpretation, you expect somebody to take somebody's dog away when they really don't have to. And who owns that dog goes a lot into that. So if you have something across the board that's equal and fair for everybody, that's something people can get behind and understand. Regarding pit bull bites, um, there was a twenty-year study done that, uh, dogbites.org, I, and I don't know if you guys know this, I just learned this when I started this, there's a whole group of people, they call them foamers. I don't know why they call them foamers, but they attack pro- towns that, that want to end breed specific legislation. They set up fake Facebook accounts that email you guys fake statistics, they don't ever cite anything. Um, they find abandoned, or they find houses that are for sale, they use those addresses to say they're, they're residents. Um, I think one about a week ago or so said he wanted to go on a, uh, wanted to come to Anamosa and shoot every pit bull in town and then make a collage out of it. Um, so that's the kind of people we're dealing with. And it's not a fair fight, because for you guys, and you guys know this, bad news sells, scary news sells. It's a lot easier to scare you guys and, and put YouTube videos of dogs attacking. We haven't had any fatalities, we haven't had any issues like that in Anamosa, but we know there's pit bulls in Anamosa. So it's probably not a, it's probably an owner issue. And I think we have good people in Anamosa. And I just think that they want you guys to show them the same trust and respect and make it easier to navigate through this process. Then, and we'll give you the same respect in return. And I think if you guys, I think Ms. Smith, you own wiener dogs, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, two of those caused fatalities.
I can believe it.
So, how hard would you fight for your dog if somebody said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your dog away? Both your dogs?
I'd fight.
Right, and you would, and that's an issue that, that we're going to continue to fight until we get our fair and equal opportunity. Okay? And it's not, it's not anything against you guys, but at some point, Anamosa needs to become a progressive town and not so much a reactionary town. And we need to make laws that are fair and make people want to move here. And Mr. Mockert, you know of at least one person that's trying to move here and can't.
Yeah.
There's three other ones that want to buy homes. So we're not talking about, I mean, we're talking about homeowners that want to pay property tax. Um, here in Anamosa, want to live here and go to Fairway and go to the shops downtown. That, you guys have said, no, we're not doing that because of the dog you own. Um, there's two other people that have contacted me that moved out of Anamosa because of it and referencing that, you know, it's, it's either the way it's always been or the highway. And I, and I don't, I don't agree with that. Rod, you and I haven't agreed on this issue at all. And I understand you, but I, I do respect you. Um, the very first meeting I was ever at, I don't even know if you remember this, but you talked to a bunch of people about water grates and standing water. And you said, well, why can't we, as a city, facilitate between the homeowners and the contractors? You guys didn't have to do that, but you wanted to because it's what's good for the city of Anamosa, right? I don't think you had any hidden, hidden agenda or ill intent behind that or anything like that. And that's all we're asking for. We're not asking for special treatment, but you do have sixteen hundred people in Anamosa. Is that, is that about right, sixteen hundred?
No.
Is it more than that?
More than that.
How much is it?
About forty-four hundred, without the penitentiary.
I'm sorry. I looked it up online and it said sixteen hundred, so can't trust Google. Sorry. But you do have quite a bit of people here, and I think, like every community, ninety-nine percent of them are good people. The people that aren't, sure as heck aren't coming to city council meetings. And the dogs that they own are probably the least of your concern. I think that's fair to say. So going forward, you know, I don't expect anybody to like pit bulls or like me, I know I'm a little rough around the edges sometime and talk a little much, but just know that there is a lot of people that have put their faith in you guys to make good decisions and decisions based on facts and statistics that's been presented to you over this issue, rather than just fear, fear and videos, okay? Um, I want to thank you guys for letting me talk to you guys for the last six months. Um, Mr. Crump, I really enjoyed talking to you. Um, and that's all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions for me at all? Okay, thanks.
Chris, you make mention that you brought in, into council chamber statistics-
Yes.
-to support your side of this issue.
Yes.
I have an inbox full of statistics that doesn't support your side.
And which statistics are those? Where do those get cited? Because he-
I'd have to look.
Um-
They're there.
Okay.
Alright.
And-
So what makes your information accurate and the other information false?
Yep.
And if they were standing here, they would be saying the same exact thing you are, that those statistics that you're being provided with are inaccurate.
In, in those, in those statistics, I'm sure it says sixty-one percent of pit bull, uh, pit bull and pit bull mixes are responsible for sixty percent, one percent of dog bites. They are responsible for, uh, most fatalities. Is that about right? Clo- close to that, okay. Um, and why I feel more confident than people opposed to that is because that information was passed over to the Center for Disease and Control. Completely unbiased, they, they make no money off of dogs, they make no money off of this information. And they took that, and I actually, I provided that, I think it was the second time I, the first time I spoke up here. Um, and they got through it and they said that in their findings from, most dog bites go unreported. Uh, because they are, a lot, most, a lot of times they're from smaller dogs, they're family dogs, and they don't, they just don't get reported that much. Eighty percent of the dog, dog bites in that's, in the study for over a twenty-year period, eighty percent of those were misidentified. And that's not, that's not a slight on anybody, but it's because when police officers, vets, uh, humane societies, animal control, look at a dog, it's very hard to tell exactly what breed it is. Okay, if they ever put a dog down, they're not going to DNA test the dog. So the Center for Disease and Control said they're adamantly against breed specific legislation because of those facts that the, the studies that they had were inaccurate. So if every dog bite in, over a twenty-year period, a completely unbiased source, the government ran source that actually spent money on this to research this, said eighty percent of the time, these dogs are being misidentified as pit bulls. And I do agree with you that these dogs have been used for a lot of bad things. Okay? Do any of you guys know what a Catahoula leopard dog is? Any of you guys at all? Okay, it's a, it's a, it's my, I have a Catahoula. Those dogs are used for boar hunting down in Kentucky. And they're used for boar hunting because they'll kill, they'll kill a boar, okay? On that, my dog found a bunch of rabbits last year, didn't even, didn't even harm them, just hit them with their nose. So I don't, I'm, I'm totally acknowledging the fact that pit bulls have you, been used for bad things. But they haven't, they still are, but majority of them aren't being used for that anymore. And that's where you guys have to really trust people that they're not using that for that, okay? And if you, I mean, does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, it, it-
Because I mean if we-
Statistics, statistics that are presented, are presented to support your side of the discussion.
Absolutely.
That's what they, that's what they're there for.
Yep, but I also think-
Morning after our last council meeting.
Yep.
There was, out east, there was a pit bull that got into an elementary school and bit seven elementary students.
I'm actually really glad you brought that up, because did you read the story the day, that, day after? That was a pit bull puppy, and the nurse saw all seven kids, and the puppy jumped up on kids, and they did it as a precautionary, didn't bite a single kid. So I'm actually really glad, because Fox News, wherever that was from, I think North Carolina, ran the story as a pit bull got into the school and-
They re- reported as a seven bite occurrence.
Yep. And they actually retracted that story and the next day they came out with, it was a little guy that was jumping up on kids. And they just superficial scratches and the nurse checked him out at the beginning. So, you know, if you take any, any statistic you want, I would just, please listen to Mr. Darrell, who works with these dogs every day and was asked a very direct question, if these dogs are inherently more aggressive than any other dog, and he said no. And that's, I don't, I think that should go a long way. And I don't really think that he had an, a biased reason for answering that question. Is that all? Alright.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Six point oh proclamations none. And we're going to change up seven point three to seven point one, so. Seven point three discussion and possible action on resolution establishing and adopting guidelines for public participation at city council meetings. You guys all look that over.
I think we made the changes that you guys indicated at the last meeting. May to will. We also discussed council participation and the questions of the discussion to refrain until after they're done, so they get their full five minutes.
And that's a roll vote.
I'll make the motion to approve, um, the resolution establishing and adopting guidelines for public participation. Second.
First by Britt, second by Cody. Any further discussion?
Do you, do you want to kind of summarize it for the public, so everybody's aware of the process maybe? Jacob, Betty?
Sure. Um, so the resolution basically has three different, three different sections. Um, first is just, um, addressing any of the public presentations. Um, any person wishing to address the council, uh, in a, in a presentation format, um, needs to submit their item of discussion in writing by the close of business the Wednesday preceding the, uh, council meeting. And, uh, any presenters are to address the mayor of the council only and are not to, uh, address the public, uh, any member of the public is not to ask questions to the presenter without permission of the council. Uh, the second issue just addresses, um, people addressing other topics and making comments, and it basically, uh, limits time to five minutes per person, per, uh, I, per item, so, um. That, that five minutes also applies to any, uh, topic at the end of the meeting, uh, if items not listed on the agenda. So that's pretty much the summary.
It's a roll, it's a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
So seven point two discussion and possible action on third reading of ordinance amending chapter fifty-five of the city code, animal protection and control to drop breed specific prohibition.
I want to start by thanking everybody for letting me waive the third reading, our postponement until this meeting. And I had a lot of phone calls, emails, um, text messages, people who have contacted me in support of the amount of time that the council has taken to take this seriously. And Chris, I agree with what you're saying, this, there's got to be a compromise on this. In the last two weeks, I have visited with two outside the community attorneys, one that is a city attorney for someone and about the pit bull thing, and he gave me what discrimination? Everybody thinks we're discriminating against their dogs. Well, in constitutional law, the grant by statute of particular privileges to a class arbitrarily dis- designated from a sizable number of persons where no reasonable distinction exists between the favored and disfavored classes. Federal laws supplemented by court decision prohibit discrimination in such areas as employment, housing, voting rights, education, and access to public facilities. They also prescribe discrimination on the basis of race, age, sex, nationality, disability, or religion. In addition, state and local laws can prohibit discrimination in these areas and in others not covered by federal laws. Your dogs are not a protected class. I don't believe the intent of discrimination against a dog is just, um, not all dogs are the same. As much as I wish they were and we'd like to think they are, they're not. The other thing I got from two vets I talked to, one says he won't even let pit bulls, they won't take care of pit bulls. They cannot come into their vet clinic and he feels it's his right not to. The other one has no problem with pit bulls, has no problems with pit bulls coming in, but he does have, or she, it's a female vet. She has, um, when they do come in, and it's not just pit bulls, it's what, she has a list of dogs, including chow chows, have to have muzzles on them when they're out in the public of their, with other people and dogs. So I agree with what you're saying about Brian Darrell, but like all attorneys and all doctors, everybody has a different opinion. And I think that we also have to be open and honest to that. We also have a list here of all the communities that still have pit bull bans. Um, it would have been nice, I would have loved to have called every one of them. I touched on a few of them, if there's people in that area that I know about their intent of getting and lifting their pit bull bans. And some of the communities have, nobody's even addressed it with them, so it hasn't even been an issue yet. But I'm sure we're treading the way here for a lot of communities. Um, so I just kind of wanted to share some of that. Oh, and I talked to two insurance companies about the pit bulls. One of them happens to be our own city attorney, our attorney, our own city insurance company, and, um, not that I didn't believe you Nancy, but I like to do my own homework. I'm surprised at how many insurance companies will not insure pit bulls. There was one insurance company I talked to, and he had said that, um, they won't even do a, um, oh, not even reduce liability on pit bulls. That if you've got five hundred thousand dollars insured and you have a pit bull, they won't even insure it with a reduced liability of like twenty-five thousand. So, and they're saying that it's not just them, but it's actually the companies they have. Um, and then there's classes too, not just pit bulls, but they have a list of other dogs too.
Can I ask you a quick question? Did you ask about any of the three, or was that-
Yeah, I just said that. I said there was a list of other dogs also.
I feel that it helps the community to know where dogs are. And you do that through licensing, it shows that the dog has had rabies shots. I was thinking last night, within spitting distance of my house, there's thirteen dogs. We were told that there were forty-six licensed dog in town. That means most of the dogs aren't licensed, we have no idea who owns them, we have no idea whether they've had their rabies shots. And trust- And trust me, I know from being at school and hearing students talk about their dogs, that there are a lot of pits in town. Let's license them, let's get them out in the open instead of hidden.
You guys, uh, actually read the memo where I stated that I, I think, my, my feeling on things is, is kind of the, the middle ground with the ordinance that we're discussing. So, uh, I guess my recommendation remains the same, that to not pass this third reading and take under consideration new ordinance, but if you have any other, I guess if you have any questions to me about, could change this or whatever.
And the new ordinance that you're talking about will take care of the problem?
No, because it's, the hundred dollars is way too much. If I spend a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get a dog out of, from the dog welfare, I don't have another hundred dollars to probably pay for my dog license, so I'm still gonna hide it.
Well, I think, truthfully, looking at it, to me, the hundred dollar licensing fee for a pit bull or any dog of that, and that falls into this category, does tell me that we want people to basically hide their dogs instead of registering them at the four dollars. So, I would rather know where that dog is at, so if it does get loose, we know who the owner is. Instead of, hey, we're gonna slap, here's a hundred dollars, plus you gotta do all these other things. It's counterproductive.
And we're also talking about the same dogs that insurance companies do not and will not insure. And it's all about risk avoidance. At some point, as the city, we also have to take into consideration, we lift the pit bull ban, it costs a little bit extra to license your dog, but we have to at some point also think about risk avoidance for the city.
You know, I've lived, I think this is my tenth place in Iowa. I've had a dog every place, and I've never had an insurance person ask me what kind of a dog I had.
And, and it's, from what I have understood from some insurance people, they will not ask you the dog breed the first time until the dog makes the first bite. Then they may drop you after the first bite, but if there's an insurance company that will not insure you at that onset, there's always somebody that will insure you. So, all they have to do is go find that insurance company. And if it falls underneath their homeowners, it will cover that first bite, after that, then they may have to look.
And oftentimes, after that first bite, they're told to put the dog down, or they will not be covered.
Well, and the other part of that is, is after the first bite, by our vicious dog ordinance, that dog's gone. So, it really kinda becomes a moot point at that stage.
As I look at the proposed ordinance, it's in front of us. You can look at the hundred dollar licensing fee is going, going to offset the requirements. And there's, there's follow-up activity by some code enforcement officer. Yeah, there's gonna be time verification. In a sense, it comes at a cost, and I think it would be consumed by that hundred dollar licensing fee.
Well, that's if we institute all of those provisions.
As, as the proposal is in front of us.
Which, I'm not, there's a lot, there's some of these provisions that are in here I'm not in favor of, that I think should be changed. Um, the one thing is, you know, I have no problem with the spayed or neutered. That can come for, that information can come from the vet when they apply for their license. So, there's really nothing there that needs to be monitored, 'cause that is going to come from the vet. So.
Do we, do we need to take care of our first item that we started with before we move on to the?
If we're not, if we're not gonna go off of Jacob's recommendation.
Table it again?
Jacob, who, uh, I'm sorry, Cody.
'Cause we're now talking about two agenda items.
Right.
But I thought the mayor just put seven point two in front of us.
And it's written?
Yeah, it's kinda one or the other, so I guess, you know.
We put seven three in front of seven one.
So he, he changed the numbers, so he's, he's on seven one, basically.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say seven point two.
Well, he did, but he shifted seven one down to seven two.
Gotcha.
Yes.
He's recommending but not passing, so if you don't, it's kinda.
I have a message from somebody that couldn't be here tonight, and it kinda goes with what, if we go off of Jacob's recommendation, it says, "I think the new administrator is on the right track. I agree with the new ordinance as he has it written. It will face a lot of bucking from the public, but I think it's a compromise that will allow the dogs in and yet keep the backyard breeders at bay. It will be responsible owners and not just someone that gets a pit puppy because it is cute, then nine months later, after they've done nothing to train it, turn it loose to become the city's problem. The animal welfare friends could lower their price for adopting a pit into Anamosa Home to allow for the new fees and licensing. The dog, I think the compromise that will allow the dogs in and yet keep the backyard breeders at bay, is this two, did I read this backwards? I have two separate sheets here. Oh, the dog, here it is. The dog will come already spayed and neutered, and they will have the placement. But they would need to agree to this, and they are also money hungry, I don't know if they would. Even a discount rate could perhaps cushion the extra cost of adopting a pit into Anamosa City Limits. And I noticed that Monticello has a pit bull ban.
Well, if you're doing that, Mount Vernon does not.
But I mean, this comes from Monticello.
We can go back and forth on who's got it and who doesn't.
I'm saying that 'cause this came from Monticello.
So, they're not a resident of Anamosa?
The animal welfare friends are in Monticello, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the last dogs that attacked Inky, the vet that treated him, who is a research vet, in addition to being a practicing vet, said he would rather work with a pit bull than a Chihuahua. So you can, it's just like, you know, first one and then another. You can, you can prove, you can say anything. It's really hard.
I, I know there are a couple people that want to, but I need a first and a second on, on this.
So I understand why there possibly would be a higher fee for licensing the dog if there's more background that we have to do with inspecting a kennel or what have you like that, that would need to be done on-site, more so than just getting information from the vet. Not opposed to a higher fee, but maybe there's some middle ground there.
Are you saying the fee should be exactly the same?
I think it should be.
That, if you wanna talk, go out in the lobby.
How, uh, are the rest of the items on there?
Well, when I read it, there's several things in here that, you know, I was reading about, um, enclosed structure with, which couldn't be a privacy fence, enclosed structure, plus it had to have, uh, top to it. So, how big of an enclosed structure are you going to have that a dog can be in the backyard that's gonna have a, uh, fence or whatever over the top of it to, I'm guessing that's to maintain the dog inside? I mean, so are you talking a four-foot fence, a six-foot fence? How high of, of fence are, are you looking at on that? Um, why a privacy fence wouldn't work?
Well, I guess.
I, I mean, there, those are just some of the questions I had initially.
This was based off of ordinances that, uh, other communities have adopted in, in replacing their, their pit bull ban. Um, this is an ordinance that I've used in the past, in my past experience, um, and, well, a modification of, not this exact, but, but it had that same provision requiring a confinement with, with a top, and, uh, the rationale behind it was, m- most cities, and I, and I honestly can't say that I've researched the fence ordinance in, in Anamosa yet, but have a six-foot limit, and some dogs, uh, not just pit bulls, but pit bulls included, can jump that fence or dig under that fence, and the, the confinement, uh, uh, section tries to limit the dog escaping, because that's kind of the precaution to having any incident where it might bust.
So, it really wouldn't matter what the fence is then, if they can dig under it?
Well, again, the confinement is specific to saying that, that it has to go into the ground or, or something like that, so it, it couldn't be dug through. Um, now, all of it's changed, I mean, it can all be changed, I'm, I'm saying it has to be exactly what for what I presented, uh, but I, I felt that they were reasonable precautions, so.
Safety's the main thing.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide is safety.
It is, but it's, it's with all breeds of dogs then.
Yeah, oh yes.
Is the thing. And Jacob said any dog can jump a fence and get out and take after somebody.
Jacob, Jacob, has the, uh, city attorney had an opportunity to review this proposal?
Yeah, I mean, we worked together on the ordinance, I mean, this wasn't, this was my suggestion, but we worked together, we put it together, uh, make sure that it worked, and so he was, I think, supportive of it.
So then he would believe all items listed herein would be defendable?
I, I would think so. I don't, I don't know why he would not bring that up if he thought otherwise.
Jacob, didn't the community you come from, didn't they have like two hundred and fifty dollars and it got lowered to a hundred?
They, they did have a, a licensing of two hundred and fifty dollars at the previous.
How many people, how many dogs in their community were licensed, all of them?
No, and, no.
Well, no, we could have them all for five dollars K, and they're not all getting paid.
Well, I know that, but quite frankly, if I had to face this, I'd move. I won't deny it, I'd move.
Ed, I, I'm open to, to changing that amount, uh, I think, again, my thinking was covering the cost of the added administration, but, uh, that's, again, all, all can be changed, so.
Um, the other question I have is, you've got about, so, where is, about taking pictures of side and front? If they're licensed, is there a reason for taking pictures of them, if they got tags on them?
I think the idea is to, um, again, have another precaution for identifying the dog. Um, you know, if, if they end up not having their tag on them, they get licensed, then they never even get put on or falls off or whatever. Um, this gives us another thing to look back on to try to make sure that, you know, if it was to bite, you know, to dig it out and bit somebody, that we could say, yeah, we have good reason to say that it was your dog, we have pictures of it here on file.
And I get what you're saying about the hundred dollars, but I feel different about that. I feel the way people, if somebody really, really had a love for a pit bull, really that's what they wanted. It's no different to me than if you bought a Kia and had to insure it, the cost is gonna be different than you buy a Lamborghini and have to insure it. You know, the cost is nothing to most people who have in their mind, this is what I want, it's what I'm willing to spend my money on. Um, whether you shop at, for clothing at Van Mar or you shop at Kohl's, it all depends on what you really, really want and what you wanna spend your money on. And I think that people who want the pit bull and are here fighting for the pit bull, you guys want the ban lifted, people don't want the ban lifted, and I'm finding more people approaching me that do not want the ban lifted that does, that this is a compromise, and for those that love their dog and this is what they want, they're gonna be willing to spend the money on it. And five years from now, I hope they're the first ones to say, you were so dead wrong, Betty. We followed all the rules, and you know what, not one problem, so there you have it. I'm okay with it, I'll take it, I'll be wrong, but this was a good compromise, and I think that if people can't afford it, and it's a hardship on them, then they're probably, yeah, financially struggling with vet bills and everything else of owning a dog. I mean, and I'm just hypothetically saying that, I'm not pointing out anybody, I'm just using it as a blanket example.
But if somebody now has a pup they have, or a dog, pit a cross, you know, and they've had for years and had it regi- and do have it registered, maybe it's only ten percent, you know, then that's gonna be a hundred bucks for, you know, and I know it's got the cross in there, and not a.
And then you have to have liability insurance, and you have to have, and you have to have a pen.
I mean, by the time you get done with the, the extra fence, you're talking some serious money by the time you get done doing the structure that is recommended. You know, you talk about, you've talked to people and so forth, and I've talked to several, and they're all in favor of lifting the ban as just plain lifting it.
And I've talked to them too.
So, you know, there's, like Chris was saying, you can go out and you can find this side, this side, middle ground, wherever, but I'm not sure that, in all honesty, that this is, this next, or seven point two, whatever it is now, um, this recommendation is a true compromise. I don't believe it is.
No, I don't either.
What do you think on this would be a true compromise?
Well, I don't know what would truly be here, but I don't believe this is it. I don't, I'm not sure muzzling a dog is going to be a true compromise to some people. Putting in the fence is gonna be a compromise. A hundred dollar fee. There's some things here where if you look at it and say, okay, if you're doing this for a pit bull, are we gonna do it for the rottweiler? Or the German shepherd, for the Do- Doberman Pinscher? You know, 'cause they're all within the top ten for bite dogs too. Um, St. Bernard are up there for dogs too, which you have two of them. So, are we gonna go there? I mean, at what point do you stop? So that's why I'm saying, I don't believe this is a true compromise.
And you're comfortable just lifting the ban and being done with what we have already for aggressive dog ordinance?
With what we have for aggressive dog, first bite, they're gone anyway. You know, Mount Vernon doesn't have anything, I haven't heard of any issues they've had.
My concern with pit bulls is that it only takes one, you know, if it ends up being somebody that you or I happen to care about, it's gonna matter a lot.
Well, it is, but.
And then I know there's other breeds, I'm, I'm not, I'm, that's where I come in and, and.
But see, this is, this is where.
I've, I've seen, you know, we did have, we had a pit bull attack, a couple domestic cats, and it, it was, it was bad, I mean, luckily it wasn't a person, but that's, that was kinda the, why I think the, the restrictions, again, not banning them, but the restrictions I felt were, was for, for public safety, but.
Well, we had what, Dave Kleis was in here, I don't know how many months ago, and he was bit by, I think it was a boxer, is that right? You know, and that boxer was on its second bite. It should've been gone after the first, but it was on its second bite. If we do our enforcement and we're going to get most of it, but if you go back. We had a boxer do it, so now are we going to put something in for boxers? I guess that's what I'm saying is, where do we stop with this enforcement?
That's the tough decision we have, I mean, I, there, as, as Betty pointed out, we've, we've got this list in front of us of cities that. Ban pit bulls or some that ban more than that, um, I think is, Mayor and I were talking, Fairfield bans just about every, uh. Seems like almost every type of dog, can't, almost can't own a dog there, but, uh.
But they do, they just try to.
Yeah, and it's probably not enforced, but.
Exactly.
But, I think that's, uh, it seems at some point in time, most communities came to the understanding that. There was a distinction between pit bulls or not and that's just the, the decision we have, you and the council have. Uh, now is to figure out where that line needs to be, so.
Is there anything in there, Tammy, do you have anything for fence to be contained or not, what's our ordinance now?
Our, um, fence ordinance basically states that, um, fences in the front yard can only be three foot in height. So basically, from the front of your building forward is the front yard, so three foot, no taller. Side and rear yard is six foot. And then in the front yard, they can only be thirty percent solid. They can't be more than thirty percent solid for visual light of sight, I guess, for driving, I don't know.
Three foot isn't very tall.
No, it's not, not if you're going to have one in the center.
No.
You'd have to make an exception in the ordinance for that.
I would like to see a compromise, I would like to see the people who want the pit bull banned lifted, get what they want. And I would like to see the people who want restrictions at the bare minimum to get what they want. I think that it's doable, I think it's just, and I think that. I just think it's the right thing to do and I get it. Did you have something to say, Mike?
I will here in a minute, or do you want me to address the council?
We have it, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion.
I'll address you here in a few minutes.
Clarify again which one you're speaking of now.
Well, I thought we were on, the one that I read was.
Third reading.
Yeah, the third reading.
Just for clarification.
So I haven't had a motion on that one yet. And I don't think I probably will.
I'll make a motion to drop the breed specific prohibition.
So your motion to approve the third reading?
Yes.
I've got a first.
I'll second it.
Second by Rich.
No, it's public.
No, we've heard from you, we'll talk from, we'll hear from you first. Yeah, I know, but we'll take her first.
I just had a quick question.
Up to the thing and tell us who you are.
My name is Tanya Pulaski and I just had a quick question, if we have to register our dog every year for a hundred dollars, where is that money going? What's it going towards?
The, it would go towards the enforcement of the ordinance, so, uh, towards the going out and making sure the kennel is inspected and, and those sort of things.
Okay.
So is, is that going to be inspected on a yearly basis then, is that the intent?
Yeah, that would be the idea.
And who's doing the inspection?
Uh, I, my plan would be that the police officers who would be licensing the dogs.
So then you're going to pay them?
Then you're going to pay them double.
Out of what we're trying to pay for our animals?
All that money goes into the general fund, the police department is, everything operational in the, in the police department is paid out of the general fund. So it's going with their dog licensing fees, just where they go now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before we proceed with additional comments from the public, I would also, I would just like to point out that earlier. We adopted, uh. Protocol for. This council meeting and all that was no sidebar discussion, I would appreciate if it would cease for the remainder of the evening. If you have something to say, address the council at that time or take your discussion outside, please. Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor.
Yep, alright.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hello council, my name is Cash Weber, I live at three oh seven South David Street. And I'm only here simply, I do, I do not own a pit bull currently, I have two dogs, one that most people in town know about, not registered. Just picked up a pup, um, in December, cold, wet, rainy on one fifty one. Uh, she now lives with me, she's my dog, I just spent a hundred twenty five dollars spading neuter, spading her and, and making sure she's up to date on all of her shots and everything else. Um, to me, it's, doesn't necessarily sound like some sort of a compromise. Because the ban's been there forever, so, and it's only, and it's, and it, the dog enforcement is not, it's not being enforced, I mean. I know, um, the officers here in town, they have other things to, to concern themselves with that are more, uh, important, I've seen a lot. I've seen cats run all over, regardless in fact, cats and I can run up and bite someone, my point is, uh, February eighth. Um, my fiancee of four years, uh, that she lived here in town for four years with me as well, she, 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 uh. She was hit by a car and, and died. I have a thirteen year old, her son, who's chosen to live in this town and be here because he loves this town, he loves the school system, I love this town, I love this school system. I have no, I mean, there's things about every town that you're going to find that isn't good or whatever. Uh, my point is that I need help with this thirteen year old, okay, so there's, so I have options. I can pick up, move back to Louisiana, live there where, where my fiance's family lived, um, or I can get help here. And I have a friend who's willing to move and help me one hundred percent of the time, she would also, uh, get a job here in town. She would be a taxpayer, she would be a contributive member of society, a law abiding citizen. And she's got a pit, she's got two, and one of them lays on the floor all day long and does nothing because he's fat and lazy. The other one will jump on your face and lick you all day long, I think that the biggest thing that I see in here is just fear. And when you're pinpointing a specific dog, a specific breed, you can say it's not discrimination, but it kind of is. But it's the same thing as getting on, at this point in today's society, it's the same thing as getting on, uh, an airplane. And seeing a gentleman with a head wrap on and the first thing we think is they're going to hijack the plane. Because that's what's been drilled into our heads, same thing with pit bulls, it's been drilled into our heads that they're vicious dogs. I hate chihuahuas because they bite the crap out of me, you know, so I think that it's to, to say, it's not discrimination, but. If you own a pit bull, you have to put up fences and I can't afford that, but I need help, pay extra a hundred bucks, you know what, I'm willing to do that. I'll give the police department a hundred bucks every year to help me, no questions asked. I would even microchip that dog just so you guys can have, why not just make sure it's microchipped? Spading neuter is another thing, but you're talking about adding, you know, yeah. Excuse me while I try to calm down just a little bit.
You're fine.
You're adding, you're saying that if you own a Lamborghini, you know what you're getting into. If you own a Volkswagen, you know where you're getting into. The thing is, you're not giving the people an opportunity to think about it and, and say, okay. I can afford this Lamborghini, so I'm going to go get it. If your car looks like a Lamborghini, it's really a Nissan, well, you're going to pay more. So the thing is that I do, from what I've heard and I've paid attention to, uh, Facebook and whatnot. And I know there's a lot of derogatory statements, I'm not going to say I don't get upset, I am upset. I'm upset because I need help physically, I have a friend who's willing to help me and I can't have her come here. Or she has to euthanize her dog that just lays there or get rid of the dog that plays with everybody because he's a pit bull. I have a, I have a, a German shorthair, he's got a bigger mouth bite than either one of those two dogs. But he's, he's not going to, I mean, I think you should hold the owners responsible. It's the same thing as a child running around town, breaking into the buildings, you're going to hold that parent responsible. If that dog is out and on, it's loose and it's loose and it's vicious against others, you're going to hold that owner responsible. And then if it bites, you're going to hold the dog responsible as well by euthanizing, I get that. But I think that you're not really, it's not really a compromise, you know, I think that. If there's an extra fee, there's an extra fee, if there's, but, but to throw all of the salt on the wound after the fact. Um, I can't afford to put a fence up, I can barely afford to bury her. I can't afford to, to, to do a lot of the things you ask, I can find other homeowners insurance, absolutely, I can do that. But to then say, okay, now you're going to pay this, pay this, pay this, muzzle your dog, not a big deal, not really a big deal. But let's muzzle every dog, every dog bites and it's not typically out of aggression, it's out of fear. You know, my dog, my German shorthair is, he's the friendliest dog you're ever meet, but if you walk up on him and scare him, he's going to freak out and bark on you. And his hair's going to stand up and you're going to think he's a vicious dog, till you tell you, hey Duke, come here, and then he, he plays with you all day. So I think that. Hold the, hold the, the residents who are law abiding citizens responsible instead of just automatically, uh. You know, criminalizing that dog just like we do humans every day, you know, and that's all I really have to say, um. I need help and that's why I'm here, because I have someone who can help me that's being stopped because of ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cash.
Kelly Dick, day one ten West Walnut Street, Animal Sock. Um, first of all, I want to make a comment about the animal welfare friends being greedy.
I didn't say that.
I know, someone else did.
Okay, thank you.
And the adoption fee is a hundred and seventy five and some guy here just said that he paid a hundred and twenty five to get his dog fixed and shots. They're getting them fixed, they're getting them rabies, they're distemper, they're bordatella, they're microchipping them, they're worming them. They're giving flea and treatment and heartworm treatment monthly, believe me, a hundred and seventy five dollars just covers vet care only. Okay, get that out of the way. Well, yeah, and secondly, uh, whenever any.
Address the council.
Secondly, whenever any dog is adopted from the Animal Welfare Foundation, it's fixed, it's microchipped, it's got all that done. And if it's not fixed, it's because it's too small, but we have them sign a sterilization agreement and we follow up a hundred percent. We make sure every dog is fixed by the age of six months that it gets adopted from animal welfare. Betty, that insurance company.
Three of them.
The one that, uh, will not cover pit bulls and it didn't cover other dogs?
No, it said and other dogs.
It didn't say which ones?
Let me find them.
Okay.
I got lots of information here.
Alright.
Um, one said a wolf and he said, how about if I bring a wolf, I said, I'll throat punch you. Um, they were American terriers, American pit bull terriers, is it Stanfordshire?
Stephershire.
Is that how you say that, bull terriers, um, Doberman, rottweilers and then, um, Chow Chows. And then what's a Prisa, I'm not a dog person, I just, I know the basics, okay, like a Shelby. Um, is it a Prisa canaros?
I don't know that one. What is this, Cody?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, whatever, yeah.
Is there more on there?
Um, wolf hybrids, that was it on this one.
Okay, let's do, uh, the same registration for pit bulls for all those dogs, plus any of them that have been in town, the boxers. I mean, we're getting down to, you guys are using scare tactics. You know, you're looking at pit bulls because what has happened in the past is dog fighters have used pit bulls. But you know, they've really come down on the pit, on the dog fighting rings. Those are going bye bye and therefore using dogs as pit, pit bulls as, uh, dog, dogs that fight, that's decreasing. Okay, so if you're going to enact a legislation, don't use fear tactics. The fear tactic be, should be, it's a dangerous dog, period, I don't care what it looks like, I don't care what it is, it's a dangerous dog. And Dr. Darrow said, he has problems figuring out what a dangerous dog is, or what a pit bull is sometimes. Like that gal that came in and her pit bull was, that her, she said her dog was half pit bull, he would never have guessed. So, and my nieces, if I would ask you to take a look at the two, the two sisters together, you would never guess they were sisters. One's got blonde hair and blue eyes and the other one's real short, got dark hair and brown eyes. But they got the same parents, it's the same way with dogs, depending upon which genes, whether they get the dominant or the recessive, determines what they look like. Even though they've got the same stuff in it. So, I mean, you could take them, throw, say I'm going to throw her out because she's got blue eyes, this one over here with brown eyes has got the same parents.
So as long as all of them dogs were listed and treated the same as pit bulls, to you that's a compromise?
No, it's not, but I'm just trying to make a point.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
Because if you want to go with, um, the fatalities, we need to choose all twenty five breeds and put them in there, and I'm sorry, that includes wiener dogs.
I know.
So that would have to be banned too or have all the registration and I'll tell you what, all the time I've dealt with dogs, the only ones that have bitten here are Yorkies.
Chris Collins again, he asked for a compromise. We presented information that's unaltered dogs cause ninety percent of dog bites. So why don't we make, at a flat five dollars for every dog, if you want an unaltered dog of any breed, it's a hundred dollars. That eliminates your dog breeders, that eliminates your backyard breeders, that eliminates people stockpiling dogs and not registering them.
Do you feel though, if people aren't going to license their pit bulls because it's a hundred dollars? There will be people not licensed their unaltered dogs because it's a hundred dollars, what problem does that fix?
The problem fixes that there's very, if you want to get a pit bull, you're probably going to a humane society. More than likely, unless you get a puppy, but I tell you what, people get puppies all the time and are irresponsible, that's why there's humane societies. A compromise isn't, let's charge everybody a hundred bucks so we can fund this, because that's what you're doing, right? You're charging everybody a hundred dollars, they're roughly a hundred dollars in animosa, ten thousand dollars. Yeah, that'll fund it, so what you're doing is having every pit bull owner pay to invite police into our house. Which presents its own set of issues and completely fund this whole thing. Not, and you haven't even taken the time to research why pit bulls are more dangerous. And honestly, it's kind of an insult to our intelligence and it's a discredit to the people that have spent six months on either side of this. If you're pro, pro pit bull or anti pit bull, it's a disservice to, to the six months of really hard work that we've put in to prove our point. To just come in and say, well, this is, we're going to put all this on you so you can't own one, we're going to make it impossible, but we want you to fund it as well. So I, I do think a compromise would be, make it easier for us to register them, raise it a dollar, charge us, charge us five bucks. There's very, uh, there's not very many unaltered dogs unless you're breeding them, we don't want those anyway. Charge, maybe not charge a hundred bucks, charge twenty five, whatever it is. But just end, just stop the breed discrimination, the breed specific legislation, that's all we ask, make it the same across the board. Trust that your police department is going to enforce the one bite policy, the dog at large, all that, that's all we ask. Not special treatment, fair treatment.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mike Dearborn, four oh five North Division Street. Um, I, I tried to address this last meeting, the order in which you're doing this. I'm not sure if all your members of council understand, but I'm pretty sure some of the public is. I'm not sure if all your members of council understand, but I'm pretty sure some of the public does not understand the order in which you're doing here. If you vote down this third reading, do you continue on with your, uh, with your next item on the agenda? And vice versa? If it passes, are you still going ahead with the, with the new ordinance on, on the, uh, pit bull stipulations? That's what I was getting at last week, or two weeks ago. So, I guess I will ask you, Mayor, or if it's voted, if the third reading is voted in favor of, so that means pit bulls are allowed, are you gonna go ahead with the next agenda item?
Well, I have to.
Okay, because they're all allowed, so now you're gonna have stipulations put in place, I understand that. If it's voted down, the third reading, are you gonna go ahead with the next agenda item?
I said yes.
No? Un, listen to me, please. I said if it's voted down, if the third read, and you do prohibit, pit bulls, why would you go on with the next item?
Can I answer your question?
Mayor, can he answer your question, ask my, answer my question?
Of course.
Go ahead, Jacob.
The, the two ordinances on our agenda regarding pit bulls, they both address repealing the ban, one just adds the regulations on top of it, so it wouldn't make sense to pass both. You, you, it's one or the other essentially.
So, so if one thing happens, the other doesn't, or vice versa, so I'm asking you, would you be going ahead with the, with the vote on the next item? If you have, if you've agreed to ban the pit bulls, you're just gonna go ahead and agree to rewrite the, the ordinance to include them with these stipulations, is that what you're saying, Jacob?
That's what the, the second ordinance is, it lifts the ban but adds regulations.
Okay, just as long as they all understand that's what they're voting on here.
Right now, the one we're considering now is the third reading of the original ordinance, which is to just let it, no regulations.
So, um, on that issue, as far as compromise, Betty, you, you keep saying that we're, we're looking for compromise. I agree with Kay and Rich. This is not a compromise, not even close. What this is to me, and I'm sure not only me, is it provides an out for those who are riding the fence. Now, it's, it's fair to say that Rod and I rarely have ever agree on anything. But I'm gonna give him kudos tonight because he hasn't flinched one bit on this. He's voted the same all the way through. This, this new thing here isn't for him. 'Cause I'm assuming he's just gonna go ahead and vote it down, and that's, I admire him for that. I, and it, it doesn't matter which side of the issue I'm talking about. But what you're, you're getting at here is you're giving somebody the chance to play both sides of this game. Play, okay, I, I helped you guys out, I helped you guys out. Please, all I'm asking, this last thing I'm gonna say, is be brave. Either you want the pit bulls in this town or you don't. Because that, that, those other stipulations are excessive and intrusive. So they're really, what you're saying is you don't want pit bulls. That's the bottom line here. That's all I have to say, unless somebody has a question. Do you, Betty?
No, I just, I disagree. If I had a pit bull, and it was my family, and it was one of my fur puppies and my children, I would do anything to keep it. Including follow these rules. So, I disagree.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Justin Harper, six oh four North Lane Street. Um, been out in Anamosa for five years, lived out here, you know, go to work and see the Rapids every day. Um, I just, when you guys vote, I want you to think about responsible dog owners. Responsible dog owner will agree, my dog bites someone, you can hold me accountable. I feel like, uh, the compromise is not a compromise as well. I've had nothing but good experiences with the breed, I know people that have had the opposite. Not a fan of German Shepherds or Chihuahuas, had bad experiences with the breed. Statistics, if you take statistics, you can form them for one way or another, based off of the control group that you use and who you ask. Just wanna give us the opportunity to be responsible dog owners and, there's many towns that don't, but there's many towns that do. I'm, I'm sure when we go to see the Rapids, we're not fearful that, you know, some dog that loose, being a pit bull, is gonna jump out and bite us in a Walmart parking lot, you know? That's pretty much what I got for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come up and just say one last thing. Tanya Pulaski, one oh two, South Oak Street. Um, going back to what Chris said about having negotiation of, okay, you know, five dollar fee for every dog or whatever to register them. Make sure that they are spayed and neutered. Um, I work at a kennel, I deal with dogs and cats every single day. Um, if you spay and neuter your animals, that is gonna extremely decrease the aggressiveness of a dog. Or any animal. It, it doesn't matter what breed they are, if they are pit bulls, if they are German Shepherds or whatever. So, I just wanted to address kind of in back you of what you were saying, so, thank you.
Thank you. So you're ready to vote on that one? It's a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
No.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
No.
All right. Seven point three, discussion possible action on first reading of ordinance deleting pit bull terriers from dangerous animal definition and requiring proof of insurance for registration.
So, being that you guys just passed the other one, it wouldn't make sense to pass this one? We would need a vote to not approve it.
So you're saying, just for clarification, because we lifted the pit bull ban, it doesn't make sense to have stricter regulations?
They're not really conflicting, but they, I guess they both address lifting the, the ban. And so, to me, it's repetitive, I guess. Something, I guess, that could be cleaned up later, but, uh, to me, it wouldn't make sense to, to have them both pass.
So we just-
We could, I mean, if, work, if there are some regulations that the council's interested in, hopefully we can work on those and bring these back in a separate ordinance later, um, and address it separately.
Well, one ordinance that we probably should be addressing, and it's just not for pit bulls alone, would be for like breeders or unaltered dogs. And that should be standard across the board for all breeds.
What exactly you looking for?
Well, if, if we have somebody in town who has an unaltered dog, I'm hoping that they register and we know what it, where it's at, but at the same time, if somebody's a breeder, we should have them licensed as breeders in town so we know who is actually doing that. Because there are so many places in the state of Iowa that are breeding dogs at enormous rates that shouldn't be doing it. And I know at one place in town, and this is probably ten years ago, they had six dogs running around in the backyard and they were breeding them. I'm guessing that they, and it was not a big house. So I'm guessing by standards, they're not, they were not really breeding in the proper manner. So I think that's something that we should be addressing too.
Breeder registration?
Something.
Okay.
Within two years ago, we had somebody in an upstairs downtown apartment breeding dogs.
So, I, I think we should be addressing some of those issues too. But that's not going to a breed specific, that's just in general.
Right.
So, we'll just table that one?
As I read this proposed ordinance in front of us, this, to me, falls right in line with, uh, the ban being lifted. But what, what it is, is requirements put on, uh, the breed of dog that's called out. So, with that, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance as it's been presented before us.
First by Rod.
I'll second it.
Second by Betty. Any further discussion? It's a roll vote.
Kay?
No.
John?
No.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty? Yes. Rich?
No.
Motion failed.
And just so the public knows, it cannot be a tiebreaker.
Correct, the mayor has the power on non-ordinance, non-resumition.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I mean, it's just good to clarify. Thank you.
Seven point four, discussion possible action on bid results for review process for the city of Anamosa employee personnel policies through discrimination sensitivity training for city of Anamosa employees.
As requested last meeting, one true proposal from the interested law firms, and we got them. So, everyone from Shuttlesworth and Ingersoll, Bradley Riley.
Simmons Prime?
Yeah, Simmons Prime, is it in our calendar?
Yes.
So, I guess, as I put in the memo, the lowest was Shuttlesworth. And then, uh, Bradley Riley was kind of in the middle, and Simmons Prime. I guess I wouldn't say that at the top, it was just difficult to tell because they gave a range and they didn't give a not to exceed amount. Um, so if you're just looking at this dollars and cents, Shuttlesworth and Ingersoll had a little bid. They also gave the most detailed proposal, so we'd have an idea of what we were paying for, I guess. Um, I guess, to me, I, I think that's the strongest proposal, but it's, uh, I guess if you guys have any questions, we'll launch a discussion for, for that.
I agree that Shuttlesworth was, uh, presentation on their proposal was benicidal. Um, I know that Brian Fagan from Simmons is one of the, he's a city attorney for a lot of communities and is one of the most sought-after employment law attorneys in eastern Iowa almost, and he's really got a good reputation. So, I would be happy with either one of them.
Yeah, I have no reason to sit with any, any one of the three would be bad decisions. Yeah, whatever, whatever the capital desires.
Did you see the motion?
Do you need a motion?
I make a motion to go with Brian Fagan of Simmons Prime.
First by Betty.
I'll second it.
Second by Kay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
If, if I'm looking at Simmons Prime's bid, it looks to me like between the two items, the upper end of that could be eight thousand dollars. Where, uh, I believe it was what Shuttlesworth said that they would cap it, or expected to cap it at, what was that?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred for, yeah. So we're looking at a pretty big price differential.
Where'd you get the eight thousand?
They, they, they said-
Four thousand for the review of the policy and four thousand for training.
Range fifteen hundred to four thousand to conduct the training.
So, and he's doing the policy and the training for the-
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you look at the combined cost.
Yeah, if, if he stuck to his bottom end, he would be the same amount in Shuttlesworth. But the problem is, with the range, you don't know.
And odds are, if they, if they've got that range, they're going for the upper range.
And it's quite a range.
Yes, it is.
So Shuttlesworth is going to do both for what?
Thirty-five hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Then I totally misread what they were proposing.
Oh, because Simmons Prime broke it down to training and-
Mm-hmm.
And, okay.
Yeah, and, two different things.
Right.
All right, I missed the end.
And Shuttlesworth says total cost not to exceed thirty-five hundred.
Can I withdraw my second?
I withdraw my first. Thank God we have a lot of eyes on what we do. I make a motion to go with Shuttlesworth.
I'll second that one.
First by Betty, to go with Shuttlesworth, second by Kay.
So Bradley and Riley?
Thank you.
They have a three thousand dollar max for both? Am I reading that right?
They, they have a three thousand not to exceed for, uh,
Policy, really?
Policy, and then they have twelve hundred for the training. So their ma, maximum for both services is four, forty-two hundred.
So they would come in second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Will the motion read back again?
What?
Can I please have the motion read back again?
I motion we go with Shuttlesworth.
Okay, seconded it. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed, carried. Seven point five, discussion possible action on a meet and greet for the new city administrator Jacob Sheridan, tentative, tentative date April sixth, twenty eighteen at Anamosa Library from five thirty PM to seven PM.
So move, if that works for you.
Yeah.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Seven point six, discussion possible action on email option and proposal for city staff and elected officials.
See, you should have in front of you two different proposals, uh, See, you should have in front of you two different proposals, uh, one from ITS and one from Iowa Solutions. Both of these are somewhat similar, I mean, they're both cloud-based solutions, meaning that there would be no physical server in our building. There would be a physical server, um, at their location, and at least in the case of Iowa Solutions, I know there would be a server in Des Moines and Chicago, so that if you ever had, you know, an actual disaster or whatever, one location where you lost your files, they would be backed up in another physical location. We have another, um, our, our kind of in-house IT person that we're working with for a, a third option, which would be the cost of an in-house server, we just don't have the proposal prepared for tonight, so I think we can have our kind of, our discussion where we want to go, and we can continue the conversation. Um, I do, uh, Nicole from ITS is here to kind of answer any questions about the proposal, so.
Hi, Nicole Samborn from ITS. I don't know if you had any questions about the two quotes, I think there is one for a sonic wall, a firewall, and then the other is for hosted exchange email. I don't know if you want to me to do a little bit of info on that.
Do you guys understand what we're talking about?
Can you just kind of give us a rundown on it?
Yeah, yeah, uh, so the sonic wall we have is just, uh, it's a firewall, and what we have with it is the advanced gateway security. Which, that, one minute. It'll inspect traffic, it'll, uh, detect any, detect and block any intrusion, and have any, uh, known malware. Um, it'll also, uh, any files that come in, it won't approve it until it's tested it and knows that it's safe. Um, we also have content filtering with that. The firewall comes with a set list of, um, categories, um, and from that date on, you can, um, move around, see what you need blocked, um, move it that way. So there is a, uh, firewall as a service and the regular firewall on there. So it's two different options, options that you can choose. Uh, firewall as a service, um, it's a monthly pricing. And that has proactive monitoring and alerting, and it'll update, um, any firmware, software, or any security updates that may have. The firewall with the license, once you buy that, that's yours, um, if any problems should arise, um, you can call us and we would take care of that for you. Do you have any questions on the firewall?
Are you maintaining the firewall then? Doing the patches on it?
Um, if.
Keeping it up?
If you were to do the firewall as a service, that would be sonic wall, that would, um, do all the updates and.
They'd automatically download them?
Yep, they would monitor that for you.
Cause the one thing I, I've noticed where I work, whenever he does updates on the sonic wall. It seems to go in and change the parameters.
Okay.
So he has to go back in and reset, you know, the blocking of this, this, and this at certain points.
Right.
So if they're going to automatically push and do that, and we have blocks or parameters put in place, somebody's gonna have to make sure that they're maintained.
Right, yeah, and.
So.
Yeah, it should stay the same, but, um, I can definitely check that out, I know that's probably a pretty big issue. Um, so I can definitely check that out for you, uh, just so you don't lose any protection that you already have.
You had mentioned that on incoming, uh, mail, that it needs to be verified for legitimacy?
Right.
And that there's no malware?
Right.
What is the delay time for that to occur?
Um, there shouldn't be too much of a delay, I know there.
Too much is too broad.
Right, yeah, um, I'm not a hundred percent on that actual time difference it would take, um.
Minutes?
No, I, it wouldn't take minutes or hours, um. I guess it just depends what you're looking up, um, so I'm not, I wouldn't know the exact timing of that, um. But it kind of depends on how much security what you want, and if you want to sacrifice the security for timing. That would be something.
Well, and Rod, in answer to that, some of that would be, if it's got keywords in it, it will scrub that and drop it into a spam folder or someplace else that will not allow it in until somebody actually goes and looks at it. But as far as actually holding up email coming in, you, you wouldn't really notice much of a difference. And I'm assuming then you're putting the sonic wall here? Or are you maintaining it someplace, uh, cause where's the, the, this email being hosted at?
I think it would be posted through ITS, in my understanding, but I did, my understanding was if we buy the sonic wall, I think it would be, the sonic wall would be here.
Would be hooked here.
Where, yeah, the email is, is cloud-based.
Okay, so if the sonic wall is here, depending on how we're structuring the infrastructure then, depends. Cause like if Dan at Waste Water, is his traffic gonna come into City Hall to pass through then? Is that the, the design? Because right now, you've got internet down there.
And that was the question I had, was about how we're gonna operate with all the different city departments being spread throughout the city, and I guess I didn't have a clear understanding of that either.
Yeah, cause we'd have to.
We don't have the same internet in every location.
Yeah, we'd have to figure out our infrastructure on this before we can actually say, this is the thing to do then.
So they probably need to take a little closer look at our situation.
We do, cause, you know, we could have Waste Water actually do a VPN up to here to pass through and, and go out that, the traffic that way, but we need to know if we've got capabilities to do that. The same with the police department and everything else.
And did we determine all the departments would be doing this with the exception of the library?
I, I guess it, it makes sense to me to have all the departments on the same email server, um.
Yeah, that was the intent, was all city employees are using the same email server, using consistent addresses.
I, I think it's because we discussed at one time the library doesn't pay for internet or.
Well, but that's different, this is email, they can still use internet for something else, but this is, their e- email traffic would have to flow through here.
What, what about security and, you know, police department sending emails that there's personal information that you certainly don't want to be perched? City Hall at times would could possibly send, uh, employee personal information.
By tapping them on their phone.
Or to, uh, department heads. I ju- I just want to make sure that the security is there.
Right.
With, with the cloud base, the.
Yeah, and with the emails, um, you can have it, an administrator can have access to the emails, so they can see what's being sent and if there are any.
And the administrator would be on your end or be on our end?
Be on your end.
Okay.
Well, a- and along with some of that, depending on what's being sent out, they can encrypt PDF files and encrypt things so that if it goes out, they have to have a key on the other end to open it up. So I mean, there is ways of sending secure email too.
And this would include having these emails on their phones and their computers both?
Yeah, whatever's connected to your network.
Does that give you some direction now?
We think there's like thirty-five.
Well, I, we have just short of thirty full-time employees, and I figure we probably have to use part-time, and then I think it would be best policy to also have official, uh, council emails as well, so that's where the thirty-five to forty figures came in.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. God, I'm gonna have to learn about this too.
Are you wanting direction?
Well, I, I think, I, I guess, the only main direction I would want is if you guys are, if you have a direction in terms of something cloud-based like what we're looking at tonight, or if you're feeling more towards a physical server, which we don't have. Again, we don't have prepared tonight, but we, we will set our bids so that we can discuss and, and understand our options, but.
I'm okay with the cloud-based.
Final times.
When, when you first presented this or brought this up, Rich, weren't you talking an in-house server though?
Well, I was, but cloud-based, you can do it and do it cheaper, and it is secure. The thing it is, that by doing it this way, we still maintain control, we still have access, we're in control of it. Which is, to me, the first intent of it, is having, regaining that control again. Um, because unfortunately, we do have people who are using personal email for business. So if we ever had to do something, you know, if, if something happened to them and we had to get in contact with some of these companies, we have no access to their email. If we do this, we have access to their email to go back in and see who they were in contact with, what was happening, what was being discussed. And on top of that, it also takes us to, back to the emails with the police chief. We have control of seeing what's going through individuals' email that work for the city that are using city equipment. So I think it's a way of getting some control on what we're doing. Now, the cloud base, that works because we still have the access to it. Now, if it's in how, if it's in-house server, that's great too, but it's gonna be a little bit more expensive, I think.
More equipment for us to maintain.
What's that?
There's more equipment for us to maintain.
Well, and then we, we have to maintain it and so forth, yeah.
And that becomes obsolete.
The, the risk there is also, I mean, if, if, there would be options to back it up to another location, I'm sure, but that, that's just more costly. If you don't do that, then if you have something happen here like a fire or whatever, if that's your one.
Right.
Backup, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can always take an in-house server and back it up to the cloud. You can always do that too, but if it's already there. But the, the big intent to me right now is gaining control of our email.
Right, absolutely.
Perfect.
So if that's the direction, um, I, I mean, you, you still want to see a quote for an in-house?
Well, it wouldn't hurt, I mean.
We will, we'll, we'll work on that, and I guess, in the meantime, if there's questions about either of these or whatever, we'll, I wanna hopefully over, you know, between now and our next meeting, get a little bit more information, so we can make, start, start getting towards a decision.
Yeah, and I see like on one of these, the price is firm until April fifth, you might want to talk to them about extending that out, cause that's before our next meeting.
Alright, so we got that taken care of. Eight point oh, public safety. Eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of brand liquor license, a renewal of plastic liquor license, outdoor service with Sunday sale privileges, La Hacienda Mexican restaurant.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Cody. Any discussion? They finally got it, all taken care of. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried? Eight point two, discussion and possible action on first reading of ordinance prescribing civil penalties for failure to license dogs.
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Cody. Any further discussion on that one? Not until we get done discussing it.
I thought it was the first or the second.
Okay, okay, alright.
Randy Day, three oh four South Overstreet Anamosa. I read that, and the first offenses, what's the fine for?
Sixty-five.
Is that per day? I was confused on that.
I think the, the way we talked about this Travis, if I'm right, was you were gonna cite it, and then it's kind of like a nuisance, they were given so much time to.
Well, in theory, you'd go before the court proceeding, found guilty or not, if they're found guilty and still haven't, uh, updated their license or got the license, then they'd be in violation of the second offense.
Okay.
So the way I handle the nuisance, and it, and I had a kickback from Adrian, is that, you know, for that court proceeding, once that is done, then they have it rectified the wrong, and then you can go for second offense at that point.
I was just confused on how it read, because I must have misread it.
No, it does say for each day.
Oh, okay, alright. I'll take that. That, that was my only question, because I think that's excessive.
Yeah, like you said Travis, by the time it gets to court.
They're gonna be seven hundred fifty, I mean.
If you did every day, yeah.
Every day for municipal infractions and state charges, you still have that due process clause that they have to go through. They, they can't be found guilty of a charge when they haven't had their time in court yet, which if we're adding that second day, because they haven't paid for the first day, well then, they've already been technically found guilty of the first day, does that make sense? So you, they gotta have that due process.
Yeah.
So then maybe it shouldn't be in there per day.
I, I can check with Adrian if we need to change the, the.
Maybe we just need to look at the wording.
Yeah.
I'm John Ely, three oh one North Davis, and I'd like permission to poll the console on how many people read the emails that I sent. Raise your hand if you did, if it's alright. Okay, then I don't have anything to add.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Any further discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Well, no.
Cause. Yeah, somebody needs to either withdraw it or amend that.
Oh, forgot.
Table it until Adrian can review it.
So who has a motion, Rod? And I second it.
It was Rod and Cody.
Yeah.
Cause if you pass it like it is, that'll just be like it is.
Right. Well, John, I second it. Change it if we need to.
Can we make the motion with the wording change?
I think you can.
Yeah, you can.
You can say the motion with.
Yeah.
For each occurrence?
For each day.
For each day.
Well, that's what it says.
You're saying change it to for each occurrence.
Oh, I see, for each occurrence.
For each occurrence?
Well, you can't do that, because.
When we talked about this, it was to follow along with the nuisance ordinances Travis has stated earlier.
Mm-hmm.
We might want to have Adrian look at the wording. Make sure you're not.
Yeah.
Let's.
I'll withdraw my motion, we can table this.
Three hundred.
You'll let Adrian look at it? Alright. Nine point oh, public courts, none. Ten point oh, finance, ten point one, discussion possible action on the payment of bill for the month of March twenty eighteen.
Month of current.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Cody.
I got a question. There's a listing here for Anamosa Floral, says flowers daddy-daughter.
Daddy-daughter days.
There's no amount.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, right. That's me putting it in the spreadsheet, so that's my type of. Anamosa floral, thirty-six dollars.
Uh, another question, there's a line item here for infrastructure, um, says email host.
Infrastructure technology?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What is email host?
That's for infrastructure technologies to host the email, like the, they charge them a monthly fee at the police department for hosting and backup.
Or that's the, that's the police department, okay.
Correct.
And then, we had reckless haul sand?
Yeah, um-
Why?
Greg did that on that, I think, I'm not sure why that was, if that was just in the middle of, uh, where they were doing the snow blowing? I don't know, off the top of my head. Do we have sander truck?
Get quite a number of them.
I think it's to haul sand into Mex to put in our trucks.
But we've got trucks to haul sand with.
Yeah, cause he had them haul, uh, four and a half loads to the same shop. I can find out. So that was for them to deliver the sand for our trucks too?
Yeah, but our trucks could have gone and gotten the sand. It wasn't real busy winter, the snow every day plowing.
I'll, I'll look into it.
Okay.
Page two, line item six one, three nine one. Be the third section halfway down. Two thousand seventy-one ninety-nine for a portable welder. Is that new, is that replacement?
That's new for the wastewater department, they haven't had one.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a first and a second.
I'm sorry.
Done with the questions, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Eleven point O, city administrators report.
I, uh, attended the Iowa Municipal Institute Conference, a very good conference. Got to meet a lot of the different city managers in the state, so, you know, have the people to reference questions and things like that, um. Hopefully, I'll get to attend in the future, there's questions, if, the conference will continue, but, uh, it, it was a very good function, um. Primarily working on our search for a new chief of police, we've got, uh, I think a limited number of applicants, and so be working with you to go through that, um. Got this upcoming week, uh, meeting at Jones Regional Medical Center, uh, employer forum, and, and also a community foundation with Alliance Energy and Solid Point, so, just trying to get to know the different, uh, organizations, community partners, so.
All right.
Is that all, yeah?
Yep.
Twelve point O, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Jones County Economic Development has the hiring of the new director narrowed down. Nothing's been happening yet, but it's getting closer.
The library is discussing baffles to reduce the sound, they talked about the geothermal, and they're waiting to decide, get more information on that, and they have some programs on ancestry you can go down and find out. Your genetic heritage. Whether you're whatever. I was gonna say something, and I decided I was gonna say, I had to double clutch that one.
Funny.
Thirteen point O, public with business with accounts on items not on the agenda.
Don Ellis, five oh five East First Street, about a week and a half ago, I talked with Jacob, uh, did not get a response. My question was, driving back into town, I noticed that a city employee was power sweeping or whatever with a still, I don't know what it's actually called, it's a rubber paddle wheel, was, um, power sweeping a resident's property. And I asked him to check on it and to give me a call back, I have not received a call back on any of that.
So if he handles it with the employee, you need to be notified? Is that what?
Well, I, my question was, are we doing it for everybody? That was my question. I don't think city equipment should be power sweeping a resident of Anamosas.
It shouldn't be, and, no, we're not, I mean, doing it for everybody, uh, so, I apologize for not getting your, your call back, uh, I, it must have been something that dropped.
Okay.
So, I will, I will look into it, and, uh, rest of it, we're not doing it for everybody, and it's not something that should be at all.
Okay, thank you.
Fourteen, oop.
Sorry.
Caught you out of the corner of my eye.
Um, Leanna Boone, one four nine eight four, two hundred and thirtieth avenue, um, I just wanted to share with you that, um, there's some emails sent out to Economic Development in the chamber, that Anamosa Stone City area has the opportunity to host, um, the American Gothic sculpture, it's called God Bless America, it's a twenty-foot tall sculpture. Um, it's like on a fourteen by fourteen foot base. It, uh, goes all over the country, it's very famous. The normal charge to host this, and it's for a period of like six months to a year, is sixty thousand dollars. They've offered it to us for twenty thousand dollars. So, there's a few of us that are working on, well, trying to figure out if we can actually do this and where to get the funding. And this is all new, but I just wanted to let you all know what has the potential to be a big, um, tourist attraction for our area. One town that did it said they brought in an extra seven hundred thousand dollars when they had it.
If it were to be done in her timeframe, like this year yet, next year?
Yes, yeah, and we have to decide within a week if we can come up with this money.
Okay, so, when would it be here, like for Pumpkin Fest timing?
It will be, yeah.
And, do they have a place in mind they'd like to?
Just has to be a flat spot, um, one of the spots we talked about was, um, Scott Street over by Wayne Hall, where the community Christmas tree is.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to make something like that work, um, possibly Stone City, it just depends, we just have to find the right spot. And it depends on who helps us out with it too, where it goes. It's not a for sure thing, it's just something that was brought up and that we're trying to work on. Um, I sent a couple emails out to some utility companies, and they were all for it, and, um, got a couple donations verbally committed.
Good job.
Be a great thing.
It would be.
Thank you.
Fourteen point O, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
First by-
Shut up, my mouth.
Second by John, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Now you know.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed.
That's what happens when you've been with ninth graders all day.
You gotta, you gotta be Johnny on the spot to get out of here. There's no hesitation.